Call to order the regular open meeting for the West Bridgewater School Committee. Could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. And a moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I would like to start out with introducing our student representative, Ally Adams. Thank you so much for coming. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9th, 2020 school committee meeting?
Moved.
Moved. Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And under personnel, I'd like to introduce the new staff over at the Spring Street School. Mr. Bodwell, would you like to have a few words to say?
We're so happy to have Maureen Ellis. She's sitting next to my left, but joined us at the Spring Street School. Just from the moment she stepped into the office, she just does a great job making great connections with the students, staff, families, and our office staff. So it's been really positive, a great experience, and we're looking forward to having a great tenure here.
And I'd also like to add that Mrs. Ellis is going to be replacing Kim LaCroy as the school committee secretary at this time because of just all of the busyness over at the superintendent's office with Mr. Bodwell. It's best if Kim LaCroy kind of focuses her attention. So we had decided that we would merge those two positions. So we'd like to thank Kim for all of her hard work that she's done for us over the years. And welcome aboard, Maureen.
The new face of the Spring Street School. Do you put them in?
And under recognitions, we have, we'd like to present with our 2020 piece poster contest winner. And our first place winner was Mr. Ben Stapleton. So I believe Mr. McLaughlin, would you? That was so.
Good evening. I just want to say how proud we are of Ben at the Howard School. You know, we always have a fairly good sized group of kids that enter this competition. And, and you know, we're impressed with all of their artwork. And Ben's clearly stood out, and I just think it's really inspiring, and I'm very proud of his effort and his creativity here. Well done, Ben.
Well done. That's gorgeous. Did a phenomenal job on that. You've got some talent, for sure. You know, great.
Nice job, Ben.
That's great. I love all the colors. It's beautiful. All right. Thank you so much for coming in. If you'd like to, at this time, go and start your homework or whatever else, or maybe do some more coloring and designing, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much for coming in. Thank you, guys. Good night. And under the superintendent's update, Mr. Bodwell.
The first update, the CEO is going to give an update on the joint conference that he went to, the MASC.
So on November 7th, I met with other delegates at the MASC 75th Annual Meeting. We voted on 10 resolutions. Resolution 2, 3, 6, 8, and 9 all passed unanimously. Resolution 1 was passed as presented. Resolution 5 was passed as presented. Resolution 7 was passed as proposed. And Resolution 10 was tabled and passed for the motion at table for a later date to discuss.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up for a winter sports athletic update, we have our athletic director, Mrs. Jen Hamel.
Hey, everybody. How you doing? Jen Hamel, Athletic Director here at West Bridgewater. Always a pleasure to be here, always a pleasure to talk about winter sports and our student athletes. Before I kind of talk about winter sports, I just kind of wanted to wrap up our fall season, which was again awesome. Kids did great, made it through our seasons, you know, made it to playoffs. And I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations. We had, again, we, we took part in the Southeast Conference. So we had some Southeast Conference All-Stars, and I just wanted to congratulate them. For field hockey, we had Paul McCafferty, Rachel Smith, Anna Trot, Elise Polyofico. For golf, we had Tyler Bisby, Tommy Shidi, Zach Bellaty. For boys soccer, we had Landon Crowley, Aiden Wells, Joe LaRosa, Aiden Reynolds, and Chase Ryan. Girls soccer, Rachel Ginnich, Kylie Fuller, Ariana Gigantis, Sophia Roy. We also had a couple of girls on the girls soccer team that were EMAS All-Stars, and they were Sophie Roy, forgive me, I can't see, and Rachel Ginnich. So it's special congratulations there. Some other SCC All-Stars from girls cross-country, we had Dorothea McGrath, Adi Hoenggasser, Lauren Mitchison, Charlotte Tsunasky. Boys cross-country, Mattson Anderson, Nathan Raza. Also, congratulations to Mattson Anderson, who is being named to the Boston Herald 2020 Boys Country All-Scholastic Team. So congratulations there. And then finally, we had volleyball. We had Ava Harkins and Brianna Vilneg. So congratulations. Truly deserved. Everyone did a great job. So congratulations to all. So we kind of move on to winter. We will now be back playing in our Mayflower Athletic Conference. Schools competing at this time, it'll be us, Holbrook, Bishop Connolly, and Westport. Also kind of included in that mix is going to be South Shore Christian Academy. So really look forward to kind of getting that started. The MIAA has approved certain winter sports, so we are going to be, we have boys and girls basketball, middle school boys and girls basketball, gymnastics, girls ice hockey, boys ice hockey. Gymnastics is our co-op with BR. Boys hockey, boys ice hockey is our co-op with Southeastern. And then we have girls ice hockey, who is our co-op with East Bridgewater. So signups are open. So you sign up on family ID. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I'm happy to kind of guide you through the process. But things we're looking for as you sign up are, you know, having an updated physical, an impact test or a concussion test, which our trainer, Audra Robbins, will contact you if needed. And user fee payments, they're not due at this time, but as we get tryouts done and teams are complete, then we'll be looking for it at that time. I'll have more information coming, you know, regarding practice and game schedules. I thank everyone for their patience. You know, it's kind of day by day as things are kind of coming together. But again, everyone, you know, I certainly do appreciate everyone's patience with that. Just want to mention our coaches for this season. So for boys basketball, we have Coach Antonio, who is our varsity boys coach. We have Nick Campagna, who's our JV boys basketball coach. Steve Reddington, who is our freshman boys basketball coach. And then we have George Sylvester as our middle school boys basketball coach. Girls, we have varsity girls is basketball is Tim Dougherty. JV girls is Leah O'Brien. And then we are in the process of hiring someone for our middle school girls basketball program. For gymnastics, we have Coach Cudworth. Again, that's a co-op with BR. Boys ice hockey, we have Coach Cabral, the co-op with Southeastern. And then girls ice hockey is Coach Campbell. So again, any questions at all, please don't hesitate to reach out. So at this time, Winter Track has been moved to our Fall 2 season, which will start probably around, you know, I think it's February 22nd. And Winter Cheer has moved to the spring. So as always, please don't hesitate to reach out and contact me. I'll get the information and, you know, certainly look forward to it. And I, as soon as I receive information, I will do my best, very best to get it out to everyone. So we look forward to another great season and, you know, thank you, everyone, for everyone's support.
Thank you. Can I just ask a quick question? Is there something about open gym or starting maybe this week till Christmas break or?
Sure. So there will be an open gym, and I'll get that information out to you. We do tomorrow, I mean, we call it open gym. We, you know, appreciate if you could contact myself or maybe Coach Antonio or Coach Dougherty, because with everything, we just start working on it and having the kids in pods and really kind of following our guidelines. So, but yes, tomorrow we have boys basketball. I think it's 2:50, 3:45, and then Wednesday is girls. And I have to get that information out, but people used to go. I'll be getting it out on Twitter. I do a lot on Twitter, and I will email that information home. But once again, please don't hesitate to reach out, and I will get those answers for you.
So are you starting, are you looking at keep it through with like cohort A, cohort B, or are you just seeing what the numbers are first?
Seeing what the numbers are. So as we get them in, people register, which they already have been.
Okay.
So we get those numbers, which have already been working out, and I think they have kids in cohorts. That's why if you contact me, I can get you to the right person, and then we'll get you into a cohort and from there.
Great. Thank you very much.
No problem.
See, I just want to thank you too for being such an advocate for our student athletes. I know a lot of work goes on behind the scenes in preparing for any season. And we usually think that weather is the worst thing we can deal with. But you've surely proven again that you go above and beyond expectations. I thank the school community themselves for supporting athletics. I think as we all feel it's an important part of the educational program of all students. Same with any kind of extracurricular activity. And we feel some schools have decided not to, and that's fine. But we've made the decision to push forward appropriately, following the guidelines they've been established. So it takes a lot of work. It takes truly a team effort with the coaches, with the student athletes, and with the parents. And the parents are certainly a piece of this. We want them to experience the athletics as well appropriately. So thank you for all you do.
Got it. My pleasure. And again, agreed, it is a team effort, and we've got a great team. Let's go WB. Thank you so much.
All right, I got to talk a little bit about some of the recent survey results that have come out. We did a total of four different surveys. Three were for parents and one was for our staff. The parent ones, we had a hybrid one, which was K to 12 for our hybrid students. Then we had two different remote surveys. One was elementary, K to 6, and secondary, 7 to 12. They capture a little bit different information. Originally, the survey was going to be closing on the 4th, on Friday, but decided to keep it open over the weekend. Our numbers were a little bit lower than anticipated, so I wanted to see if we got a few more surveys in, and we did over that time. So we really closed it out this morning. The principals are all have access to the survey, so they're going over the information as well. Some have been ongoing. We've all been looking at it, but now that it's final, they're really starting to dive into the data. Speaking first on the hybrid survey, we had 491 responses, which is about 42% of our hybrid students. There was a decent grade distribution, K to 12. We did look at students who are on IEPs, 504s, our English Language Learners, and the percentages reflected nearly what we have. So it was good to see that. In the future, we'd also add Title 1 to that. We realized that a little bit too late. Cohorts were pretty split, so we got a good representation from Cohort A and Cohort B, and also Cohort C. We asked questions. I'm just going to go over in general some of the information we gathered until we dive deeper into it. Almost 100%, 98% feel they have reliable technology both at school and at home, which is good. We spent a lot of money and efforts to get technology in the hands of our students. That is not new to West Bridgewater. We're continuing that and making sure we have the newest technology in the hands of the kids. In terms of in-person learning, a high percentage, 91%, report the workload is just enough, with a smaller percentage saying it's too much, and a smaller, again, a smaller percentage saying not enough. So that's more of our traditional in-school teaching. Continuing, remote learning, a high majority felt the workload is just enough, and then the next was too much. But we're going to look closely at the survey results. We'll divide it out by each individual grade level in school, so we can tease out more information from the comments of why some may feel it wasn't enough. But I think the big thing is, this is, you know, a little bit different. So it's hard to replicate what we're doing in school at home. I think the teachers are working extremely hard to provide that remote experience when they're not in school. Remote Wednesdays, we're looking at the structure of it to see how we can increase the rigor. It still was positive. People felt it was valuable, but there are certainly areas for improvement. The number there was not as high as we had hoped. So we're looking at that remote Wednesday to see what we can do to increase the rigor during that time. The communication from the school and teacher was considered very positive, which is good to hear that the information is getting out to the families from the principals, administration, and from the teachers, as well as Google Classroom, which we've moved to, to get all grade levels on that. Again, looking at specific comments is going to be really important to see where we can improve on, both as a district and as individual schools. And the model vary, we know our elementary model varies from our secondary model in terms of having at the elementary, a fully remote teacher, to at the secondary level, the teachers are teaching the in-person, the hybrid, and the fully remote all together. Decision we made early on with reopening. And we'll evaluate the models as we go. In terms of the secondary remote learning, which again is graded 7 to 12, we had a little bit lower percentage, only about 34% responded. If the distribution was above what we expected, nearly three quarters feel that remote learning is similar or more rigorous than in-person. That in the secondary level, that is that live synchronous teaching. We had set an amount of the 25 minutes for live synchronous teaching, and most days, most classrooms are exceeding that and keeping the kids on longer, which again, we don't, we're not looking to compare ourselves to our districts, but since some districts of these live, you know, synchronous teaching isn't happening. So we're glad it's happening with our kids, and we're impressed with what the teachers are doing. Again, reviewing the comments, there are a lot of different comments throughout the survey, both positive and constructive, which is important. Remote Wednesdays have been positive for check-ins. So when we're talking about our remote students at the secondary level, the teachers are checking in with those fully remote students on Wednesday. That's been generally a positive experience, although the amount of time isn't too long because they're checking with all those students during the half-day. We asked all reasons why people are out, and it's the highest percentage, which is percentage of health concerns at school, with the potential numbers of, you know, people getting sick at school possibly, health concerns at home. And then a smaller was a percent of the ease of being at home for whatever reason. Continuing with secondary, in terms of technology signing into classrooms, the highest percent have occasional issues, and a small have many issues. So less than, I think it's 5 or 6% have many issues. Some have an occasional issue. We didn't dive deeper into it in the survey, but from talking to the principals, they feel that number was higher at the beginning, and it's less now. We asked for the transition back to a hybrid from a fully remote, and about 40% are thinking yes, or they're not sure. So the principals are reaching out to those people, families, to find out, would they like to come back to join the hybrid students? Again, we're in a really tough time. We're all very aware of the surge after Thanksgiving and a potential surge after the holidays and Christmas time. So we're in a tougher time, but I think people are starting to make that move back to the hybrid. And again, there are many different comments that we're going to find very useful and informative. At the elementary remote, which is the K to 6, we had about 51% of the families respond. Again, a good grade distribution. The rigor compared to last year, most feel it's similar or more rigorous, so that's positive. Again, it's tough to replicate it. Fully remote, remote teachers are working hard, doing a good job, and we continue to learn. Looking at the comments, most have concerns about being in school and the health concerns at home, so that's why they're staying remote. So hopefully, if things change in the future in terms of a vaccine or our numbers decrease, we'll start to see more coming back. And the technology access and signing in, half have no issues, and only a small percent have many issues. The other category was some sometimes having issues. So most of them are not having any real issues. We are, do have new Chromebooks in, which is great. Part of the CARES money we spend on Chromebooks for those that are failing. Some of them are older, the ones that have been, especially at the elementary school. So those Chromebooks, if they're failing, we have, principals have Chromebooks they hand out to distribute to make sure there's no interruption. Continuing with the elementary survey, nearly 25% said they are considering yes, coming back, and about 40% said not sure. So again, that's a little bit higher than our secondary numbers, which I think is pretty positive. And again, it's our call to work for these families to come back into the building, talking to the administration. Maybe if they haven't been in all year, they can meet with the administrator, come into the building, see the building, and that might help them feel more comfortable about returning. And there's a multitude of factors when they're thinking of coming back. In terms of vaccines, the number of cases, to see if they're not seeing a school spread. So I think that's helping them say, maybe it's time to come back hybrid. And again, looking at the comments per grade level and making those appropriate adjustments. And finally, for our staff, we had about 40% of our staff respond. We've asked them to list three things that are going well and three things that we can look to improve our current instructional program. Lots of good information there for us to review. Most feel they were prepared for hybrid or remote, but they do have some very good suggestions. And Mrs. Yanis will be working with them to look at those suggestions, see what we can do to implement. We did a lot of PD prior to the start of year. But until you're living, it's hard to know exactly what you need to do. So they've had, you know, Wednesday afternoons to do some prep and planning and PD. And now they can look at other PD time in the future. Most feel safe in the building, but we've also asked for suggestions on things that we maybe haven't seen from the administrative level. You know, what can we do to ensure that they feel safe? From day one, we always said, we need our students, our families, and our staff to feel safe in the building. So we always want that call if they don't feel safe. And we ask for general feedback on how things are going. And that will be broken up by the school, so we can easily tease that out. We're working as an administrative team to look at reopening. Again, we know it's a process. We know that we're working through it. We're meeting as an administrative team to look and kind of phrase it, you know, reopening 2.0. Let's look at that. Let's see what we need to do, what we need to do to put in place to get our kids back here more often. We all are holding out hope that someday this will be normal again. That's everyone's goal, the time is right to get people back here more full-time. And we'll see what we can do. The working with the union has been good and productive, and we'll continue that relationship as well. Just kind of a snapshot of what the survey results were as we continue to dive a little bit deeper into them.
Thank you for presenting all of that data. It's a great idea that we're continuing to look forward to reopening the 2.0 and kind of adjusting that as hopefully things continue to move forward and other things happen beginning of the year. I think that to the district's credit, that we were all on board at the end of the school year last year and started to put all these measures in place so that everybody kind of had a roadmap of what we were going to do. So I appreciate the fact that now we're transitioning that to, again, trying to have it go to the next phase, which is hopefully bringing kids back as always. So I appreciate the forwardness. Thank you.
And that's a discussion that, you know, most superintendents are having with their committees, with their administrators and teachers, you know, looking at the timing, looking at the conditions, looking at the spaces to make, you know, because ultimately, what's most important are our kids. And obviously, everyone's safety, but we want our kids to be in as often as possible. Next, I just have a quick update on the superintendent's coffee hour. I know the administrators are also doing this at the different buildings, but just for those of you who aren't aware of them, I know I've put it out in newsletters. But it's a once-a-month meeting with myself. Their Friday mornings at 9:00 AM. Right now, they're virtual through Google Meets, but the goal of the future to do them in-person. That way, we serve some coffee and some other stuff, and otherwise, you just have to bring it on your own or make it at home. We do have an agenda of district events, the things that are going on. I think it's a great opportunity to share all the great things that are going on in the different buildings or district-wide. We've had three guest speakers so far. Our school resource officer, Officer Pope, our lead nurse, Mrs. Dietrichson, and our school psychologist, Mrs. Ponce, have been our first three guest speakers. And they just take a few minutes to talk about something that's related and hopefully informative for our parents who are joining us. And the most important part is it's an opportunity to learn more about the district, answer questions a parent may have, provide comments and feedback. It's the structured hour, but it's also an opportunity. And we want to give parents every opportunity to ask questions. Lots of great information comes out of it in terms of information that I can gather, website information. I had a lot of good feedback, an email right after from a parent providing feedback. We're making some changes there on our mobile app. There was concern that the coronavirus information wasn't there. Mr. Collins contacted the developer. The coronavirus information is now on the mobile app. So that wouldn't happen without, you know, parent input, parents speaking up. Some things we can't change, but if we can change it, if we modify it, answer questions. What I hate is for people to not have the information or be unsure of something, and that's how rumors start and misinformation, misinformation gets out there. So if they have a question or a concern, a parent, please let me know, and I will continue to promote the coffee hours.
Thank you, Mr. Bodwell.
You're welcome. And then the superintendent entry plan. This is part of a program that I'm in with, there's over 30 new superintendents in the state of Massachusetts. The end up the new superintendent induction program. It's a three-year program put under the Association of School Superintendents. Each superintendent creates an entry plan to guide learning for the district. This has been obviously a difficult year to start an entry plan as we begin with a focus on leadership during COVID. I think it's, it's a little bit different than in years past. And the coaches and the administrators in the program have been very aware of this. And we spent a lot of time, I was on a two-hour call today with my team of new superintendents and coaches, and we spent a lot of time talking mostly about COVID-related issues rather than entry kind of stuff. But the purpose is for me to learn as much about the district as possible. I've been here for 23 years, but in this role, I'm learning something new every single day. And I need to continue to gather all kinds of relevant data and information, identify years of growth, and continue to strengthen the working relationship with the entire school community. I think those are all major purposes and goals behind this plan. Asking the right questions to gather the relevant information, both to people that I'm familiar with and those that I'm not so familiar with within town. Meeting with key stakeholders in groups, and we continue to do that. Reviewing key documents that are provided within the district. And I've broken it down to a couple of different phases of the entry. So the first phase was over the summer into the fall with gathering information. Right now, I'm in the phase of processing, analyzing, and reflecting. Uh, right now I'm in the phase of processing, analyzing and reflecting on that information. And then in spring and in summer, the action plan and next steps will be created. Um, and I want to tie this together with the three goals I have in my first year. And the goal is in more than likely June, May or June, I'll be, you know, hopefully sharing out my preliminary results. And at the end of the summer, more information as we lead into year two. So I just wanted to share that with you, uh, so you're aware of this program. It's a very beneficial program. I think I've met a lot of great people. We share a lot of, uh, similar stories, which is nice. Uh, there are people in there who've moved within the district and there are people that have come from outside the district. So I, I continue to feel very fortunate to work in West Bridgewater with our school committee and our teachers and unions and so forth. So we all work very well together and I'm very happy for that.
Again, another ambitious plan, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, our student representative update, um, Ally Adams. Would you update us on the happenings at each school?
Yes, of course. So at the middle, senior high school, we have a special congratulations to Bryn Bouvier and Lexi Levine for being selected for the Hobie Youth Leadership Conference being held virtually this May. The Life One O One class had an opportunity to work with Officer Pope last week on driving safety. Officer Pope gave students a chance to try out the radar gun on cars passing by. Thankfully, no tickets were written. A senior class dinner is being held on December seventeenth at the middle, senior high school. This is an opportunity to get the senior class together to break bread. We are hop- hoping for a good turnout. The seniors are very excited, by the way. Virtual parent conferences were a big success. Both teachers and parents had positive experiences. At the Howard School, a congratulations to Ella Holden, Amy De- DeNigo and Abby Kellogg for receiving superhero awards for the food drive they organized in their neighborhood. Congrats to our superheroes of the month cohort, Eddie, for passion. These kids went above and beyond. Camilla Silva, Frank Brown, Alana Sildago, Ellie Duffy, Jackson Marino, Ailey, Ally, Eldoop Lee, Jill Bouvier, Nate Groder, Jen Lamblyn, Tegan Tarby, Addison Holland and Vivian Morales Walken. So proud of all our Wildcats. Congratulations to our peace poster contest winners for their wonderful artwork. First place, Ben Stiglum. Second place, Cameron Fray. Third place, Dominic Pettenelli. And an honorable mention to Lily Anderson. All worked extremely hard on her artwork. Parent conferences have also gone well at the Howard School. Parents have expressed how hard teachers and students are working and how much they appreciate everyone's effort. Following the Thanksgiving break, Howard School began scheduling instrument lessons for band students with Mr. L. We are excited for this. At the Roseell McDonald School, Grade Three students read Balloon Over Broadway, which is all about the Macy's Day Parade. They recreated a balloon character. The students had to come up with a way to get to the balloon to fly. In the end, they will write a how-to piece to explain how they made the character and got it in the air. The Spring Street School last week welcomed Ms. Maureen Ellis as our new Spring Street secretary. Mrs. Ellis is settling in nicely and quickly learning the ins and outs of our school. Ms. Wolin is enjoying her first few days of retirement. Mrs. Enoz, Elementary Reading Specialist is hosting twenty-five days of holiday stories. You can watch live readings every night on our Facebook page, Reading with Mrs. Ellis. Tune in to see who the surprise readers are each night. Virtual parent teacher conference were a huge success in both buildings. And from a student perspective, I just wanted to chime in and say that I really enjoy the Wednesday enrichment assignments. I think it's a productive day and I always leave feeling very enriched and I would gladly continue those. Thank you.
Can you just talk a little bit about what they are?
Yeah, so every week we have a different department come up with an activity. It's aimed to take from seven-thirty when you meet with your power block to get the assignment. And then you should be ending before eleven, but they give you that time and it's a half day every week. And then assignments are usually, um, based on just life skills, less of like, um, work, more like, more creative. So I think that it's a good way to get people thinking differently, different perspective on things.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for both the reporting and your input. Very, very appreciated, very much appreciated. Under business, uh, Mrs. Marvel, we have a homeschool application, which is a voting issue.
Push something over here. Can you hear me? Hi, uh, we have another homeschool application. I have reviewed it and it does align with the district's policy, so I would recommend that you approve it.
Do I have a motion to approve the homeschooling application as presented by Mrs. Marvel?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And next up business is our business manager, Mrs. Pan for the year two hundred and forty-four for the county cares.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Our fiscal year twenty-one expenditures to date are within budget and where I would expect them to be at this point in time. And just to recap, the town approved about thirteen point eight million dollars as a contribution from the general fund for the school department. The school contributes another two point four million dollars toward our budget. Our two point four million dollars comes from our choice funding as well as federal grants. To date, we've spent four point seven million dollars. Budget is very little discretionary spending. To put some perspective on that, ninety-one percent of our budget consists of three categories. Salaries, tuition and transportation. Total amounts with no room to freeze the costs or reduce, if we had to do that. Um, our most pressing budget concerns for the remainder of the year are unfunded COVID expenses. Um, and these are expenses that are going to include remote teacher salaries and related payroll, substitute costs for absences due to COVID, maintenance and payroll of ma- maintenance payroll and supplies and transportation costs. So those are, um, areas that we did not budget for in fiscal year twenty-one that may be of concern. Um, an additional concern for the rest of the year would be any unexpected special education costs. Every year we know that this is a possibility as we try to provide the best education we can for all of our students. And some additional, um, help may be needed for students during the year that was not budgeted for. And I'm just going to take a minute and, um, talk a little bit about the CARES Act. The CARES Act is federal funds, uh, that was provided to Plymouth County and then to the town. And this source of funding from the federal government has provided four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for our school to cover the costs of COVID that we've incurred and anticipate incurring up and through December thirtieth. The funding ends with a hard stop on December thirtieth. And Congress has not passed any additional funding to date. So that's where we have, um, you know, real concerns about the additional costs. COVID isn't ending on this, on December thirtieth, although we all wish it would. We have been communicating with the town, making them aware of the deficit that we may end up with if additional funding is not improved. They're very receptive to working with us as, as we are working with them, you know, to keep everybody aware of where we stand. So, uh, any questions?
Mrs. Grant, just, I mean, just part of the money, the COVID money or the CARES money is divided up into basically three different categories?
Um, yes, I mean, it was classified that way for reporting to the, um, to the, to Plymouth County. And it was, you know, basically anything to do with learning. Then it was a payroll category and
PPEs and
PPE was considered under, here we go. It was compliance. There were items related to learning and any distancing, you know, desks, Plexiglas, et cetera. Public health, which included all the PPE sanitizing and shields as well. And then payroll for remote teachers, uh, is, is the main source, additional maintenance health.
And all, all the funding has to go from us to the town. They look, they've got to make sure that COVID-related expenses and they approve it and submit it for reimbursement. So I think we're, all we've put in for is very responsible and very necessary in terms of technology, um, furniture and certainly salaries and PPE, so.
So the additional funding that we're going to need for the rest of the year, obviously we've already purchased our technology, furniture, Plexiglas. It would be additional, um, payroll for remote teaching and really for, um, additional maintenance and maintenance supplies. So I anticipate it to be, um, much less costly than the first half of the year, but significant nonetheless.
And the fact that these are ongoing expenses, it's clearly something that the government's going to have to realize that it's with every district, it's not just here. If it's going to be a hard stop on December thirtieth, which isn't very realistic.
It's not realistic and this round of funding will definitely stop on December thirtieth. But right now there's a, um, Congress has a, a bill up for vote that is about nine hundred billion dollars. So it would be similar to the CARES funding, you know, it's, we'll see. I think anything that, uh, doesn't pass before twelve-thirty, spending that happens from January first forward, it'll be retroactive to cover it. I can't imagine a scenario where the federal government is not going to support COVID any longer.
And even just looking at, you know, the food services program, they've already put out there that that's going to continue through the end of the school year. So I would imagine that all these other, you know, expenses with salaries and which I must also say that with all the schools that everyone had done such a responsible way of organizing and getting coverage for these remote teachers with, um, teachers who have really stepped up too. So we got to pay them, they deserve it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And next under business is the Inclusion Matters Update, Mrs. Smith.
Yes, thank you. So in November, Inclusion Matters hosted two workshops for families with and without special needs. On November fifth, Janelle Burley Hoffman returned to West Bridgewater via Zoom and she shared ideas for raising tech healthy families. And on November twentieth, Inclusion Matters hosted a virtual screening of the award-winning film, My Beautiful Stutter. Both of these events had been requested by West Bridgewater families and Inclusion Matters was delighted to bring them to the district. Special thanks to Student Services and Student Services Director, um, Mrs. Kathy Marble for co-sponsoring our November fifth event. Inclusion Matters will not meet during the December month. Our next webinar will be on Thursday, January twenty-eighth at seven PM via Zoom. We'll be joined by Elise Wolf, Program Manager for Child Services at MGH's Aspire Program. MGH Aspire works with children and teens with autism spectrum disorder and related social profiles. Elise will present the Aspire Program's unique understanding of social competence and how caregivers can increase social competency in their children. And more information on everything going on is on our Facebook page.
Great, thank you so much. And under the warrant subcommittee report, that would be myself. The following warrants were issued and paid for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Under bill warrants, there were four. First, November fifth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of one hundred thousand, sixty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. November twelfth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of eighty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-one cents. The next dated November nineteenth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents. And the last dated November twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty, in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars under parole. Twenty-twenty, one thousand, seven hundred dollars, forty-eight cents. And the second dated November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, in the amount of five hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-five cents. As always, all warrants are public record and once they are signed, they are available in the selectman's office for review. And members, the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum.
There are a few people, um, who have called in. So if there is anyone on the phone that does wish to speak, we just ask that you, um, unmute yourself and then just state your name with your question or comment. Doesn't look like we have anyone.
Okay. Okay, great. Under other district-wide meetings for school council meetings, the Spring Street School on December fourteenth at three PM, which will be virtual. The Roseell McDonald on December twenty-first at three-thirty PM, which will also be virtual. The Howard School for January twelfth at two forty-five PM, which is virtual. And then Middle Senior High School for January eleventh at two-thirty PM. And that is, I believe, in person and Mrs. Page will also be allowed to be virtual as well so that we can maybe have, um, every be easier. Great, thank you. The BTO is meeting on December fifteenth at seven PM at the Roseell McDonald Cafeteria under the middle, senior high school calendar. On December eleventh, the coffee hour at eight AM. On December eleventh, there's also a Safe Schools meeting at nine fifteen AM. And on December seventeenth is the senior dinner in the cafeteria from five to seven PM. So as Ally has stated, everyone's very excited for that. And this will be something that's very much needed for, for us seniors, I'm sure. Thank you. Under the Howard School, uh, December eleventh is the principal's coffee hour at nine AM, which is virtual. And then, I'm sorry, Mrs. Guley, is there anything on the, uh, Roseell calendar? Okay. And then, um, Spring Street School on December fifteenth and eighteenth is the Polar Express, which will be virtual without dressing.
I am looking forward to carrying on. It will, it will be virtual, but they'll have some real in-person treats, but looking forward to that.
Excellent.
To fill there though.
As long as they have their golden tickets, they'll be fine. Our next regular school committee meeting date is Monday, January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Thank God, at six-thirty PM at here at the middle, senior high school learning commons. Could I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Excited.
Thank you.